Good evening and welcome to the City Council, Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority Meeting of September ninth, two thousand and twenty-five. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Ginnisberry?
Here.
Councilmember Peacock?
Here.
Councilmember Montoya?
Present.
Councilmember Grant?
Present.
Councilmember Hinkle?
Here.
Councilmember Blodgett?
Here.
Councilmember Dixon?
Present.
Mayor Holman?
Here. All right, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item number one, we have a nomination and appointment of an eligible person to fill the council vacancy in Ward five. I entertain a motion to accept or reject the nomination from the Ward five candidate selection committee.
Motion to accept.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to accept the nomination. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion to accept passes unanimously.
All right. All right, item number two is administering the oath of office to and seating of Councilmember-elect Brandon No Fire, Ward five. And we have, I will recognize Judge Nichols, who will conduct the oath of office.
I swear to God, I state today, I've read it over, do solemnly swear, do solemnly swear that I will support the bill and the ban, that I will support, obey and defend the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma, and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma, and that I will not knowingly receive, and that I will not knowingly receive, directly or indirectly, directly or indirectly, any money or other valuable thing, any money or other valuable thing, whether performance or non-performance, whether performance or non-performance, of any act or deed pertaining to my office, of any act or deed pertaining to my office, other than the compensation allowed by law, other than the compensation allowed by law, I further swear, I further swear, that I will faithfully discharge my duties, that I will faithfully discharge my duties, as councilmember of the best of my abilities, as councilmember of the best of my abilities, No Fire declare you duly sworn and seated to the council for Ward five, City of Norman.
And I want to take a moment and just express my appreciation and thankfulness for the members of the Ward five selection committee. I really appreciate you all accepting the challenge and being very thorough with your interviewing and consideration for the candidates. And I just really appreciate that. And on behalf of the city of Norman, I just want to extend that thanks to all of you. And thank you for showing up, those of you that could here tonight, to support your decision. And so, thank you very much for that. Item number three is a resolution extending appreciation to Michael Nash for serving as Ward five councilmember in Norman, Oklahoma. I entertain a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
I vote, motion to adopt the resolution passes unanimously.
A resolution of the council of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, extending appreciation to Michael Nash for serving as Ward five councilmember in Norman, Oklahoma. Whereas the health and well-being of a democratic society relies upon the active participation of citizens in the affairs of government, and whereas the level of government closest to the people is that of municipal government, and where individuals who choose to run for municipal office do so out of a deep commitment to their community and bring with them a diverse set of values, talents, and perspectives. And whereas those elected to office accept the important responsibility of setting public policy and confronting complex issues for the betterment of their community, and whereas public service requires significant dedication, often in addition to personal and professional obligations, and demands a thoughtful and informed approach to governance, and whereas Michael Nash answered the call to public service once again and served as Ward five councilmember from July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three, to August twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five, and whereas his tenure, though brief, Councilmember Nash demonstrated a commendable commitment to his constituents, placing a strong emphasis on communication, transparency, and advocacy. His diligence is thoroughly, his diligence in thoroughly reviewing council materials and contributing to informed decision-making is worthy of recognition and appreciation. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, that the city council on behalf of the citizens of Norman formally extend its gratitude and appreciation to Michael Nash for his service to the community as Ward five councilmember, and offers best wishes for continued success in all future endeavors. Passed and adopted this ninth day, September, two thousand and twenty-five. And I will recognize Michael Nash to accept this resolution and a plaque. Just a couple things. All right, be sure to stay new to your pets, Ward five, and don't forget to flip your name plate up.
Not yet, not yet, he doesn't have it.
I've got a sharp.
I had to wait for your nomination. Next time, next time.
Okay. All right, proclamations. Items number four and five will be voted on in one motion unless there is an objection from council. Item number four is a proclamation proclaiming the week of September seventeenth through twenty-third, through twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five as Constitution Week in the city of Norman. Emily Clifton and Kathley Muckler, with the Black Beaver Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution, are here to accept that one. And then the second proclamation is proclaiming September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, through October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, as Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Norman. And we have Sadie Herrera, multicultural officer at the Oklahoma Historical Society here to accept that one. I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamations.
Motion to receive.
Second.
Proclamations.
Second. The motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamations. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
I vote, motion passes unanimously.
Easier for you than turning this thing around, okay. Is the first one? Okay, a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the week of September seventeenth to September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five, as Constitution Week in the city of Norman. Whereas September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five marks the two hundred and thirty-eighth anniversary of the signing of the Constitution of the United States of America by delegates to the Constitutional Convention, and whereas the United States Constitution created in seventeen eighty-seven with four thousand five hundred and forty-three words, including signatures, is both the shortest and oldest written constitution in use by any major government, and is for the United States the living legal document guaranteeing fundamental rights and freedom to its people. And whereas Constitution Week was established by President Eisenhower in nineteen fifty-six at the request of National Society Daughters, National Society Daughters of the American Revolution, and later adopted by the United States Congress to be celebrated annually during the week of September seventeenth through twenty-third, and whereas the purpose of Constitution Week are to raise awareness about the Constitution and its importance in shaping American society, encourage citizens to participate in the democratic process, and understand their rights and responsibilities, and honor the principles of liberty, justice, and equality enshrined in the Constitution. Now therefore I, mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the week of September seventeenth through twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five, as Constitution Week in the city of Norman, and urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privileges of being an American, consider the responsibility that those privileges involve, and ask our citizens to reaffirm those ideals that the framers of the United States Constitution espoused in seventeen eighty-seven by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. Passed and approved this ninth day of September, two thousand and twenty-five. And I would recognize Ms. Jane Harris, Regent, Black Beaver Chapter, National Society Daughters of the American Revolution, to join me here at the podium to accept this proclamation. Absolutely. If you'd like to get a picture real quick, and then you can say a few words. Yeah, right here if you'd like.
Jane Harris, our Regent, was unable to attend tonight, but she had a message, and she wanted to say that the Black Beaver Chapter of the NSDAR was established here in Norman eleven, a hundred and eleven years ago, and has also celebrated Constitution Week for the last seventy years. We wanted to give special thanks to Sooner Fashion Mall this year. Our chapter has been able to expand our observance of Constitution Week by setting up a Constitution Week window display at the mall. We encourage everyone to visit the display during the month of September to learn more about this important document and celebrate the freedoms it gives us. Thank you for helping us celebrate our founding document and by recognizing the importance of our Constitution with this proclamation. So thank, thank you.
And it may be an official week, but I would absolutely encourage everybody to spend all year long being familiar with the United States Constitution and what it means. Next, I would ask Sandy Herrera, who joined me here at the podium, multicultural officer at the Oklahoma Historical Society. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, through October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, as Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Norman. Whereas Hispanic Heritage Week started in nineteen sixty-eight by President Lyndon Johnson, and was expanded by President Ronald Reagan to cover a thirty-day period from September fifteenth through October fifteenth in nineteen eighty-eight. And whereas Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua celebrate the anniversary of their independence on September fifteenth, and Mexico and Chile celebrate their Independence Days on September sixteenth and September eighteenth, respectively, and Dia de la Raza on October twelfth, and whereas the two thousand and twenty-five Hispanic Heritage Month national theme, collective heritage honoring the past, inspiring the future, is an opportunity to recognize and learn about the history, journeys, and achievements of Hispanic and Latin American communities while spotlighting the unique voices of those who continue to pioneer change and shape the future. And whereas Norman is home to people whose ancestry represents hundreds of nations, including Mexico, Spain, and the Spanish-speaking countries of Central America, South America, and the Caribbean. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month is an opportunity to celebrate the array of distinct and vibrant cultures that throughout the history of Norman, the state of Oklahoma, and our country have contributed to our prosperity and culture while energizing our diversity. Now therefore I, mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim September fifteenth through October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, as Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Norman, and invite all Norman citizens to join me in celebrating Hispanic culture, traditions, and achievements in our community while continuing to work towards a more inclusive community. Passed and approved this ninth day of September, two thousand and twenty-five.
What an honor. Thank you, Honorable Mayor Holman, for this proclamation and the members of the council. As it was mentioned, my name is Saidee Herrera. I am a Normanite. I have been a Normanite for more than twenty years, and I am honored to accept this proclamation on behalf of the thousands of Hispanics here in the city of Norman. And here in this room alone, we have present Hispanic community leaders from the Latinas women in Norman, business owners, professionals, public servants, students, artists, historians, myself, and we, the people of Norman. I am glad to be here. Thank you, and may we continue to work together for the betterment of Norman. Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is council announcements, and we'll start at Ward one.
Thank you. Just a couple of congratulations and thanks that I want to send out. First and foremost, want to reiterate about the committee, also about our new councilman that's been selected and everything. Really look forward to the work that you're going to be able to do with us to be able to serve Norman better. I also want to send a big thank you to somebody that I've worked with for many years in our community that has decided to step away and go pursue her own passion out of our state and everything, and that's April with Food and Shelter. I just want April to know that the community really does appreciate all the hard work that she's tried to do and all the things that she's accomplished to help those in our community that sometimes can't help themselves. And it's definitely been a blessing on those that she has touched and that she has served and everything. Last thank you is to Rachel Wyatt Swanson. I've worked with her personally in the community on several different projects, and very, very glad that you're going to receive her on the Human Rights Commission. She is a very, very hard worker, but also somebody that truly cares for our citizens and all citizens of our great city that we serve and everything. So she's going to make a great contact with there. I don't usually write things down, but I have something that I wrote down that I also want to say, especially with the month and what tomorrow is and represents and everything like that. Also, just like to say that this month is Suicide Prevention Month. Tomorrow, especially September tenth, is Suicide Prevention Day. We need to help end the stigma for people that get help. We need to stand together as a community to bring strength, dignity, hope, and purpose. Together, we can change the narrative on suicide. So anybody that's listening to this, anybody in the audience that has anybody in your life that you feel is having these thoughts, please reach out to the nine eight eight number in the hotlines, please, okay? We lose too many people to this disease that can be preventable.
Thank you. Ward two?
Thank you. Welcome to the team, Councilmember No Fire.
Ward three?
Thank you, Mayor Holman. Well, good evening, Board three, in Norman, Oklahoma. I don't have any announcements tonight, but welcome aboard, Councilmember No Fire.
Ward four?
Good evening, Ward four in city of Norman. Happy Hispanic Heritage Month, and congratulations to Councilmember No Fire on his Ward five appointment. I look forward to working on Norman's needs collaboratively with you. Here's a quick list of events happening in Ward four over the next two weeks. This Friday, September twelfth, six to nine p.m., we have another art walk. And if that wasn't enough fun, Saturday on September thirteenth, from six to ten p.m. in the Miller Historic District, we will have Porch Fest. You can go online and find the event on their Facebook, and you will find where the porta-potties are. There's a love and porches with a lineup of bands. There will be barricades listed. If you can walk into the neighborhood, if you live in First Courthouse, Original Townsite, Old Stocking, or somewhere close by, consider walking and not parking. And if you do park, four tires on the pavement, not in the grass. And if you want, if you're wondering about hosting your own Porch Fest, this is not something exclusive to the Miller Historic District. It's something that started nationally in Ithaca, New York in two thousand and seven, and they actually have a website, because I would love to see more Porch Fest all over Norman. Porchfest.org wants to start a Porch Fest. That will tell you how to get one done. On Saturday, September twentieth, from nine thirty to eleven, there will be another Ward four quarterly meeting in the Development Center, which is two twenty-five North Webster. We will go over finalized retreat priorities, Development One Oh One, which will include some info about a company called Ink Dev, an initiative brought to council retreat by Councilmember Peacock and discussed in last week's BACA. If you're interested, I recommend watching that committee meeting. There will be a hard stop at ten fifty-five a.m. because falling on the heels of our quarterly ward meeting is Norman's first Ink the Block Party, also happening September twentieth from two to eight p.m. in the parking lot behind Oscillator Press, the garage, and Opelis. This event is free. It's family-friendly. It's a street festival honoring creativity in all its forms. The event will feature an outdoor stage with live music in the back of Opelis with the support of The Depot. Ink Kenny Art House will set up live mural painting stations throughout the parking lot with some stations available for crowd participation. OSC Press will host Arts Market and festival features. The highlight of it will be large-scale woodblock printing. Imagine a big woodblock, and somebody's going to ink it up and put paper on it and then run it over with a steamroller. And that is made possible by Silver Star Construction and Firehouse Art Center. The Pioneer Library System will join the fun with a Makerspace pop-up, including laser cutters and other interactive art fabrication activities. KT Duffy of the OU Art and Technology and Culture will lead their class in creating a giant art inflatable for the event as well. So I hope to see you all and out and about in the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Ward five?
I would just like to say thank you to everybody that believed in me enough to peer pressure me into applying for this job. And I would like to thank the committee specifically for taking the time to do all this and to, for selecting me, obviously. And then most of all, I would like to thank my wife, who couldn't be here tonight due to work duties. But I would like to thank her for not divorcing me because she learned about this from a news article.
Ward six?
I just want to welcome Councilmember No Fire, and also say that I did not publish that news article, so no more announcements. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, or Ward seven?
I just would like to also say welcome to Councilmember No Fire, and I just wanted to say I really appreciate everyone's grace and patience with all the construction around town. And I know that affects Ward seven residents, so I just, I just felt like I should mention it.
Ward eight?
Thanks, sir. Also want to bring up, congratulations to Rachel Wyatt Swanson, Ward eight resident. I nominated her to the Human Rights Commission. So now, there are two Ward eight residents on the Human Rights Commission that we have approved. And everything Councilmember Ginnisberry said about her is spot on. Attended Crosstown Clash over in Ward eight a few days ago, the brand-new Norman North Stadium. It's beautiful. It's wonderful for the kids at North. It's not just the football players. It's the, the kids in band, cheer and palm, all of that. They all now have their own stadium. So that's wonderful, and just a big thanks to the seventy percent of the Norman voters that approve that. And that's it for Ward eight?
Thank you. I got just a few things. Crosstown Clash, I was also there and just, it was a really wonderful time. It was a great way to kick off a really exciting and fun weekend, at least for me anyway, and with OU and the game on Saturday, but kicking it off Friday night with high school football and in a brand-new stadium. And it turned out really well, and I really appreciate the voters of Norman for approving that school bond, but also appreciate MPS and the faculty and staff and allowing me to have a sideline pass so I could take turns going sideline to sideline and supporting both teams. I wore my blue neutral MPS colors instead of orange and black or silver and black, even though I am a Norman high grad, as many of you know. But over the years, I've become a fan of, of both teams and a hometown. Whichever team wins, I feel really good about it. And it was a great game, and it looked like everybody had a wonderful time. So there was a parking issue that we discussed that took place, but I think they'll figure that out. Also, want to remind everybody that Art Walk is this Friday, I believe. Yes, and Downtown Norman, usually about six to ten, but the bars and the venues and stuff go on much later than that. But a lot of wonderful stuff to see, a lot of new businesses, a lot of existing businesses you may not know about. So I encourage you all to go check that out this Friday evening. And then also, just about the OU Michigan game this weekend, I worked on Campus Corner. I got up early morning Saturday and rode my bike down to campus to try to get into, get into the ESP and Game Day crowd and, and all that, which was a lot of fun. And then I ended up traveling around to a bunch of different tailgates on my bike, and then, and then the game turned out really wonderful. And afterwards, Campus Corner was just full to the brim. There were lines. I got some video and picked lines to get into every bar, all the way down the full to the brim. There were lines. I got some video and picked lines to get into every bar, all the way down the sidewalk, down the street. The Michigan fans, in my observation, were having a very good time. And I've received feedback from some Michigan fans expressing how wonderful a time they had in Norman. And I know there might have been an incident or two in the stadium, but other than that, they all expressed how great of a time they had in Norman, how generous and nice everybody was and how welcoming everybody was. And so I would just encourage all of our residents to continue that, that mentality as we have other big games coming up this season. So was proud to welcome the Michigan fans and I'm excited for our opportunity to visit them, I think, next season. So also wanted to mention that tomorrow is the first or inaugural meeting of the SEC Mayors Alliance, which I was contacted a month or so ago by the mayor of Tuscaloosa. And he was trying to put together the SEC mayors and get us in a group where we could have a discussion about our cities and how we handle game days or how we handle different situations that we're dealing with. So I'm really looking forward to being a part of that tomorrow and, and providing some feedback about, about how that goes. And, and then also wanted to mention that this week, many of us, Councilmember Grants and myself and City Manager Pyle and Assistant City Manager Stevenson, Assistant City Attorney Purinton and Lee McWherter and Eric Leonbauer from Norman Police Department have, are at, up at the Oklahoma Municipal League Conference this week in Oklahoma City. We were there all day today. The whole thing today was just about homelessness. There were mayors and city council members and law enforcement officials from all over the state, from some of the smallest towns to the biggest cities, all of them dealing with this issue and having a challenge with how to address it. From the smallest scale, like I said, in small towns, to the bigger cities like us in Oklahoma City and Tulsa. And so we spent the whole day with that. And then there's two more days that are all about municipal issues. So looking forward to that. And then outside of that, I just want to thank the committee appointments that were mentioned tonight for human rights and other committees. When I took office two months ago, there were only two members on the Human Rights Commission out of nine. Our city ordinance requires that a human rights committee exist, a commission exist. But you don't have to appoint members to it when they expire, apparently. So one of my goals was to get that committee filled as quickly as we could with qualified candidates. And we had a lot of applications on file that had been waiting for a while. So we contacted everybody, confirmed that people wanted to serve, confirmed with council members in those wards that they were okay with, with those people. And so we now have a full Human Rights Commission and we've made many appointments over the last two months to fill other citizen committees. And so I would just encourage you all, anybody that's interested in getting more involved at City Hall, citizen committees, which we have nearly 40 of them, are a great way to get your foot in the door with understanding how city policy might work and how things can be, how city policy can be changed and things like that. So I encourage you all to get with your council member, fill out an application on the city website and consider serving on a committee. And then lastly, just want to again welcome and thank Brandon No Fire for stepping up to this position and being willing to, to do this. It's, it can be not something everybody wanted to do. And so I appreciate you and your family. Hopefully Erica does understand. So, thank you. And with that, we will move on to the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine agenda items that they wish to be approved and/or acknowledged by one motion. Staff recommends that items six through item 23 be placed on the consent docket. I'll entertain a motion to place items six... Okay. Items six through 23 on the consent docket?
Motion?
Second.
The motion on the floor is to place items six through 26, six through 23 on the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast as unanimously.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent docket.
Motion?
Are there any comments from council regarding any items on the consent docket? Seeing none? The motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
...passes unanimously.
All right, non, moving on to the non-consent docket. Item number 24, a preliminary plat for 1508 Shady Brook Drive, a replat of lots five, six, and seven, Block Two, Indian Point Estates, generally located one east of 12th Avenue southeast and one quarter mile north of Post Oak Road. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the preliminary plat.
Motion?
Second.
Is there a representative of the applicant to make a presentation? Okay. Well, I haven't heard any objection to this proposal, but if there's nobody here to present or be here for it, I don't know if it would be proper for us to vote on it. Okay. Okay. Is there any city staff that would, is prepared to speak about this?
Good evening. Scott Sturz, Director of Public Works. Not prepared for a large presentation on this, on, having their behalf, however. This is a simple replat. It's taking two lots in the Shady Brook, in the Indian Springs Estates area, taking two lots in some area that was not usable, making it three lots, creating one more lot that's usable. It will have no real impact just adding this one lot. They'll be on private water well. It will also be utilizing a septic system. So very little impact, very simple. Like I said, just creating one more lot that could be developed for a home in this area. I could try to answer any questions you might have on this one.
Yeah, Councilmember Peacock?
It was going to be if we had a planning commission presentation that we could see, but I think this works. The question I guess I have is I see there's two existing drives for the two existing lots, but create another drive to access this kind of weird shaped flag lot that's...
Right. And if you, if you look at that, it's, it's kind of hard to tell on here, but there's a lot of contours, a lot of, a lot of problems with the, the topography there along the street to the north. So it's actually been proposed to take access on, into Cobblestone Creek, onto that roadway. And then that will be the way they'll access that. There's already one of the properties in the Indian Springs Estates that does actually access through that same roadway.
So it'd be this Pebble Beach Road?
Yeah, I couldn't remember the name of the road. I apologize.
It's fine. Trying to look at the sideways plat here, so. Okay, I think that's all I really had. Thank you.
I know the, that connection to Cobblestone has been a point of controversy before with the Cobblestone neighborhood. I don't know, is there's, so there's no applicant here to represent this project? I mean...
And to my knowledge, there have been no protests. There's been no negative comments. This, I don't believe anybody appeared at the planning commission meeting. It was an 8-0 vote of planning commission on consent docket also. So it's been very quiet. Not, not a lot that's been brought up about it. Again, it is just this one lot and it will not have connection through to Indian Springs in that area. It'll just be this one lot that'll have that access.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. Thank you. Well, if there is no objection to moving forward, strange to me that the, there's nobody here to represent the project, but... Okay, then I see no objection to that. Let's see. This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Remarks should be directed to council only. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers registered for this item?
We do have a couple. Stephen Ellis?
Steve Ellis, Ward four. Yeah, I had a question because I kind of glanced over this today and it, I, I didn't really understand that it was the division of what's currently two plats into three. So now that helps make some sense. But just looking at the map, it looked really hard to see how they were going to generate another place for a home out of that, given the, the topographic map. So maybe somebody, I don't know who would, would put the map up and you could look and see like what, where's the house supposed to go on that property? So this is mostly just curiosity. I have no idea who wanted to do this or why they wanted to do it. But I mean, it would be interesting to see since they had to ask permission. Maybe they should ask. Thanks.
Thank you.
Evan Dunn?
Okay. Are there any final comment, or any other comments from the audience about this item? Seeing none. Okay. Are there any final comments from council? Councilmember Peacock?
Just going to see if staff can confirm there was no protests or anything for this.
The planning commission minutes did not indicate that there were any body who responded on this.
Just wanted to ask. Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay. The motion on the floor is to approve the preliminary plat. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
...have been cast and the motion to approve the preliminary plat passes unanimously.
All right, miscellaneous comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address city council. Due to the Open Meetings Act regulations, council is not able to participate in discussion during miscellaneous comments. Remarks should be directed to the council as a whole and limited to four minutes or less. And do we have anybody signed up to speak?
Yes, we'll start with Diana Hutzel.
Good evening, Diana Hutzel, Ward five. So I'm going to hope you won't mind if I break that rule about not addressing a specific council person. I know we're not supposed to do that, but as one of the finalists who interviewed for the Ward five appointment, I hope you'll allow me to take this time to sincerely congratulate Brandon on his appointment and the role. I genuinely wish you the best as you step into this role. Residents in Ward five are really depending upon you and I look forward to going to your first meeting that you host for your community. I also want to take a moment to thank your family. I know your wife's not able to be here tonight and your young children, but I just appreciate the time that they're willing to give up to allow you to do this because it's, it's a lot, it's a big commitment. And anyone with family understands that lost, time lost to work commitments is time that you never get back with spending with family. So, and I say that from years of experience. Public service is never a solo act. It asks a great deal, not just of those who serve, but of the families who support them, often quietly and without recognition. And that sacrifice isn't just personal. The work itself is substantial. As you're aware, all of you that are on council, serving on council isn't just about showing up to meetings. It requires real preparation. The packets published ahead of each meeting can be hundreds of pages long, often 500 or more. Earlier this summer, in June, one was more than 2,600 pages. That's multiple days with snacks and a support group. That's a lot of pages. None are quick reads. All are dense, technical and detailed. Tonight's meeting is actually a pre, only 298 pages long. For those of us in the community who stay engaged reading the packets, watching and attending meetings, we notice when preparation shows and when it does not. Preparation matters and when it's lacking, your constituents notice, both in the questions you ask and just as often in the ones that you do not. It means engaging with staff and residents in advance. It means keeping constituents informed so they have a chance to weigh in and then carrying their voices into the room when it comes time to vote. Meetings may be scheduled for as little as half, as little as an hour, but many of us know that they've stretched late into the night and some is early, early into the morning. It takes real time, real focus and real dedication on your part. You serve on multiple committees, attend events, respond to messages and are expected to be consistently accessible, not just online, but in person. People want to know their concerns are heard, their message is answered and the representative is present. All of that takes work and time. So thank you all for that. And I think we can agree that none of you are doing this for the $100 that you earn a month, pretty sure. That's across the board. Because the work of council is so important and some of the issues so complex, I'd like to respectfully offer two practical steps to improve accessibility and transparency for the residents of Norman and your constituents. First, help people identify what matters to them. If an agenda item relates to a specific ward, add the ward information to the beginning of the agenda item, something as simple as Ward five in parentheses, if possible. That small step would save residents from searching through hundreds of pages of the packet just to find a ward-specific item that might apply to them or that they may find of interest. Second, I'd like to see the city council handbook posted on the city council page of the city website. I know that's a lot of cities. It's a helpful, plain language source outlining your responsibilities, procedures and protocols. Residents deserve access to that information. It helps set expectations and it builds trust. Thank you for all the time, energy and focus you bring to this work. The easier we make it for residents to participate in the process, the more engaged and stronger our community as a whole becomes and better-prepared future council members will be able to serve. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Stephen Ellis.
Still Steve Ellis, still Ward four. So I want to start tonight by saying congratulations to Councilmember No Fire. I, I think we all recognize that filling a vacancy on the council is, is, is kind of a tough deal and that there's no really good process. Ideally, you'd like to have an, an election which allows the members of that ward to really represent themselves fully. But of course, we have short terms and it takes a long time and it's expensive to put up an election. So it doesn't seem like that's something we should do for just a year. I think doing the election on the off-cycle makes good sense. And, and you know, there can sometimes be controversy about that, as there have been in the past. But I hope and believe that everyone is going to be satisfied with this election tonight. This is one of those cases where it seems like it really worked out for everybody. You know, I think that Councilmember No Fire is, is, you know, well-trusted by people across the spectrum. And I'm really looking forward to sort of seeing his work. So congratulations. This is my one place where I'll violate the rules. Congratulations. I'll direct you aggressively. Second point I wanted to make tonight was actually that Norman needs to get ready to oppose the expansion of Governor Stitt's Operation Safe regarding unhoused people. It's, it's going to expand to our area, I'm almost certain. And it's something that I think everyone, even the people who are often here complaining about the unhoused, can get behind. Because having state troopers round up unhoused folks and drop them off in Norman's service area, which is mostly downtown and just a little bit east, only for them to be told that, hey, there's, there's no more here for you, right? There's no room within and there are no further services for you to, to have, doesn't serve anyone's interest in this community. You know, whatever your view on the larger issue of how we should take care of our unhoused neighbors. But it does have really, really deleterious effect on our unhoused neighbors because all of their stuff gets destroyed. I, I've seen it happen at several encampment clearances and all the stuff that you collect to get by as an unhoused person basically gets treated like trash. So all of the things that you have assembled to make your life as easy as possible goes down the drain. And if they just drop you off a mile away or wherever they send you, you know, object permanence, right? People don't disappear just because the police haul them off. It turns out that your life is a lot worse. You've got to spend a lot more time getting your stuff together. So I hope that Norman says no, refuses to cooperate with this and opposes the governor if there's an attempt to move the sort of Operation Safe stuff here. It's stuff we don't want. And I think it's really incumbent upon the people who are, are, you know, Governor Stitt supporters, including who, who hold, you know, cognate views... know, Governor Stitt's supporters, including who hold, you know, cognate views, if you will, on the unhoused issue, let him know that this is not a good context for his approach, even if he thinks it will work in Tulsa. So I hope we can present a united front on this one, people. Thanks a lot, have a good night.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have Cindy Rogers.
It says four minutes. Cindy Rogers, Ward Four. I'm gonna start with a plug for this wonderful book written by an OU professor. His name is Daniel Maines, just came out. It's called Nourishing Growth and Suffocating Life: Water Politics and Infrastructure in Urban Oklahoma. And if you want to understand where we are today with our water infrastructure, with our politics, with our divisions about how to grow, anti-growth, pro-growth, pro-environment, this is a book for you. And in fact, I've read it, now I have read it twice now, and I'm gonna invite anybody interested in joining me for a reading group. I'm gonna ask Professor Maines if he'll join us too, but haven't asked him yet, so I can't volunteer him. This is a wonderful book, so I'll post that up on my Facebook. In a recent Norman transcript article, I hope you guys all saw, there was a really astounding statement from the county commissioner's spokesperson, and that was that the county commissioners thought that there should be a vote on the Arena Tiff. So this is surprising that months after the referendum, they signed a contract, the development agreement, that sort of got us all in this pickle about deadlines and things. So before they signed that agreement, there were no deadlines they had to meet. But somehow they're, they came out with this idea that, oh, there are deadlines in the agreement, we have to meet, so we should sign the agreement. I don't know, it's very confusing. But what that puts us today is that that seems like two of the parties, of the three parties in the development agreement, think there should be a vote. And my question is, have any of the parties, I guess you can only speak for yourselves, have you reached out to the third-party OU Foundation and asked them if they would agree to just put things on pause and not worry about the deadlines until we find out about the vote? If not, why not, or please do so. If so, and I would think a formal sort of letter, so that you get a formal response or no response. I think that's part of being a community, that people come together, and when two of the three parties say, hey, we should have a vote, convince the third party that that's a civic thing to do. Good luck with that, but I would like to see that happen. It's gonna raise the third thing I want to talk about, and I put together a little thing. Sadly, I didn't get quite enough copies passed off, but it's called, it's called "Tiff it Good." You can think of a song for that. As we think about the Tiff master plan and future Tiffs going forward, I have some concerns, well, suggestions, about our due diligence and what we need to do to make sure that we're following best practices. Best practices in the financial world, best practices in the economic analysis and projection world. So that's what this handout is. The number-one thing that hasn't been done is considering alternative scenarios. You were presented with the original UMP Tiff, the Arena Tiff, with one construction, full build-out, it works perfectly scenario. Folks, I'm not in the business world, but I know that's not what they do in the business world. So number one, you can't just have one scenario estimated out. I'm gonna be out of time, so I'll give this to you guys later, and, you know, if you have questions, let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I'm in that book, too. Or I think I was interviewed by Professor Maines for that book.
Our last speaker tonight is Evan Dunn.
Evan Dunn, 1400 Garfield Avenue. I like to associate myself with everything that Diana, Cynthia, and Steve said. Congratulations to Mr. No Fire. Oftentimes, I'll say I have no comment. I really have too many comments, and I'll yield back.
Okay. Are there any final comment from anybody else in the audience? Seeing none. Is there any final comment from council about this meeting? Okay, I would just say a few things real briefly. So the city of Norman has been breaking up encampments for years, and I can tell you firsthand, it has done nothing to reduce homelessness in Norman at all. If anything, it's caused populations to congregate in areas like downtown, where they have, when they get kicked out of the encampment, that's where they go. They don't go to another city, they don't leave the state, they stay here, they just find another place here to hang out until they get kicked out of that spot, and it's just a continual circle, it never ends. The county jail in Norman, the Cleveland County Jail, is full. It's especially full now that we're accepting inmates from Oklahoma City Police Department that are arrested in Cleveland County. Griffin Hospital, full. When we visited there a few weeks ago, the staff told us, it's full. We have people here from all 77 counties, and we're full. Our overnight shelter on this block, 55 people every single night, it's full. So I would encourage the state to maintain their property, which they should have been doing all along, and just remind them that if the options for people in Norman are, if they do come to Norman, are go to jail, go to treatment, or go to shelter, all of those three options in Norman are full. So I hope there is a more coordinated plan. I would encourage that the state to coordinate with our shelters and nonprofits and faith-based organizations in Norman, if they do decide to conduct activities in our city, and make sure that we are prepared to handle that type of thing. If you're breaking up encampments, those people have to have a place to go, and our nonprofits and shelters and services need to be prepared for that. So I would just say again, we've been dealing with this in Norman for years, and that approach has not worked here. And I'll leave it at that for now. All right. Thank you all, this meeting is adjourned.